Good evening, everyone. My name is Mayor Boba Fett Mitchell. And the date is Tuesday, May the 4th. It is 7:00 PM and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled City Council meeting to order. Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mayor Boba Fett Mitchell?
Present.
Emperor Palpatine Coach Mayor Procyth Lord?
Here.
Yoda Ellison? Princess Leia Flores-Kale?
Here.
K-250 Rizzo?
Present.
Ashley Rae Bradshaw?
Present.
Darth Tobias?
Thank you. All members are present. We have a quorum. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I cannot read my notes. City Managers' Report?
Minutes.
Minutes. First up is the minutes.
Motion approved.
Second? It's been motioned by Mr. Ellison, seconded by Mr. Coach. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now we're at City Managers' Report.
Several items to make you aware of. We had a budget retreat this last Saturday, and the budget calendar, as the next several steps within that budget process are in front of you on the screen. But thanks to the Council for making that a great day, and thanks for the staff for all of their input. COVID-19 testing and vaccine update. The same information that we've been sharing. You can find information on Kyle, cityofkyle.com/covid. We do have a mass vaccination event, which we are doing in partnership with the National Guard. That is May 16th, so it's coming up very soon, at Lehman High School, from 8:00 to 5:00 PM. This is a drive-through clinic, so no appointment is necessary. The National Guard will be there through 5:00 in the afternoon to be administering those vaccinations. For the Council, there are a couple of time slots that you can also volunteer for, a morning and an afternoon slot. So please, if you are available, let us know, and we'll plug you into that event. We have a couple of other great events. Mass food distribution is coming up Saturday, May 22nd, from 9:00 to 12:00, and then Saturday, June 26th, from 8:00 to 11:00. Those will both be done at the Hays, ACC Hays Campus. And again, as usual, volunteers are needed. Our Market Days kicks off very soon, this weekend. The location for this marketplace, or this Market Days, is at Greg Clark Park, and that's from 9:00 to noon. And you'll see local vendors, arts and crafts, farm-to-market items, live music, and more. Just want to confirm, that's Greg Clark Park, correct, this time? Yeah, okay. And that's something, usually, it's on the square, so this time, just be aware, it's at the Greg Clark Park, this Saturday. We have our next family skate night at the Ash Pavilion, coming up Friday, May 21st, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Cityofkyle.com/recreation for more information there. We had a great event last time, and look forward to those who would like to come and skate with us. We have a routine, or a campaign, that we're calling the 9:00 PM Routine Campaign, and we've seen, just like other cities in the area, you know, we have people that come into our town and checks, check our doors for our vehicles at night, in the streets, as they're parked. We are reminding all of our citizens to remove, lock, and light. So remove all valuables from your car, lock your car windows, doors, and garage, and light the exterior of your house. Just takes a few minutes, but this is a campaign to help us prevent any sort of burglaries. We had a great system, utility billing system upgrade, and kudos to the finance staff for making that happen, and IT department. So we have a new, much more user-friendly customer service portal. Just keep in mind, for anyone who had a automatic bill pay setup, that they'll have to go in and reestablish that with their credit card or other financial information. Our library has new hours, as of May 1st. You'll see in-person programming from 10:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 to 6:00 Friday, and 10:00 to 4:00 PM on Saturdays. And that concludes my report. Actually, I have, I do have one other item, just to make you aware of. July 4th, Independence Day is coming up here in a couple months, and we are starting to prepare for that from a staffing perspective. So one of the questions we have, as we usually do each year, is at what level should we staff up? Are we anticipating a very heavy Independence Day, which would bring out all of our police, public works, parks, employees? For that, we typically will pay them overtime for that. So that's how we plan to staff up for Independence Day, but if Council has another idea of the turnout for this year, then let us know, and we'll scale that back. But we plan on doing an all-hands Independence Day event, just like we have in prior years. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Han Solo Sellers. Appreciate that report. Next up is our first one-of-a-kind, May the 4th, Star Wars Day proclamation. We do not have anything to read. It's a little bit more about the look. So happy to have everyone here, and I know we have some staff members and others. We spent the day, we went to different schools, and got to wave at children as they showed up, and Teacher Appreciation Week, giving candies and snacks to some of the teachers as well, so it's been quite the day. We've very much enjoyed it. We enjoy not taking ourselves too seriously from time to time. So with that, I'd like to invite anybody who would like to come and take a picture with us. We're going to take a recess. I cannot see my watch.
[laughter]
What time is it?
10:00 after.
It's 10:00 after, so we'll take a recess for 10 minutes, where we can come down, take some photos. We'll make it 15, actually, because we need to change, to come back for the rest of the meeting. So with that, we are at recess. Y'all, feel free to come up for a picture. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Thank you all for, who witnessed that, for enduring that. That was fun. Next up, Gen Item Number 7, Presentation, Air Quality Awareness Week. This is Councilmember Rizzo's. I think he's asked Councilmember Flores-Kale to read this item.
He sure did, okay. Whereas air quality can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents of the City of Kyle, and whereas air pollution levels in central Texas were considered moderate or worse on 34% of days in 2020, according to the National Air Quality Index, and whereas children, older adults, people with lung disease, and people with heart disease are particularly affected by poor air quality, and make up about two out of every five residents in the Cap Cog region, and whereas ground-level ozone, O3, levels in the Austin-Round Rock, Georgetown metropolitan statistical area, MSA, remain close to exceeding the O3 National Ambient Air Quality Standard, and whereas remaining in compliance with the NAAQS is important not only for public health, but also for the region's economy and ability to conduct transportation planning, and whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has designated May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as National Air Quality Awareness Week, and whereas the City of Kyle supports the effort of the Texas, Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality, now therefore by the authority vested in me as Councilmember, District 2 of Kyle City Council, I, Yvonne Kale, do hereby proclaim that May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, is recognized as Air Quality Awareness Week. The City of Kyle encourages our residents and employees to educate themselves about air quality, including visiting Cap Cog's Air Central Texas website at aircentraltexas.org, and promote air quality and air quality awareness within our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Flores-Kale. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just like to say, as warmer temperatures in central Texas signal the beginning of a new ozone season, May 3rd through the 7th is also Air Quality Awareness Week. Nine simple things that people can do to help keep central Texas have air quality and an EPA attainment, especially on ozone action days, include: Be aware of ozone action days, announcements, and take precautions. If you are in a sensitive group, sign up to receive them at www.cleanairforce.org. Number 2, refrain from burning anything because it releases gases and particulates that can contribute to poor air quality. Replace older gas-burning vehicles with newer ones, or purchase an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle. Number 4, reduce idling vehicles at schools and drive-through lanes, and encourage delivery trucks to turn off their engines when possible. Telecommute, or avoid commuting during rush hour. Use public transportation, car pools, share a ride, and combine multiple car trips in one. 7, consider walking or biking instead of using gasoline or diesel-fueled engines. 8, fuel vehicles in the evening, and avoid topping off the tank. Number 9, reduce your overall energy consumption if possible. I want to thank this Council for taking initiative and passing a no-burn ordinance here at the City of Kyle, which helps keep our air quality clean for those that are most vulnerable, for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. Anything else to add?
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo, for bringing this forward.
Next up, Asian Pacific Heritage, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation. Councilwoman Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a brief introduction. I have the honor to bring forward one of our great employees for the City of Kyle, Ms. Danielle. She works in our IT department. She approached me a few months back, after our Dialogue for Peace and Progress in February that we did, and a big component of that event was family. And Danielle approached me and told me about how much that event touched her and made her do some, her own internal thinking, and wanted to find out more about her family and her heritage. And we talked about doing this Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation. We've never had one in the City of Kyle, and it's my honor to present this forward to the Council, and I will state that Danielle wrote this entire proclamation herself, and I'm so proud of her for doing that, and I hope you all enjoy it. Danielle?
Thank you. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month started as a commemorative occasion that broadly applies to, but not limited to, all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia, with various other islands included in that, but I don't want to read through all of that for you. The first celebration originated in Congress in 1977 by Representative Frank Horton of New York and Representative Norman Manetta of California. The proclamation was introduced with House Joint Resolution 540, which proclaimed the first 10 days in May as Pacific Asian American Heritage Week. During the same year, Senator Daniel Inui introduced a similar resolution, Senate Joint Resolution 72. After two failed attempts, Representative Horton went back and introduced House Joint Resolution 1007 in June of 1978. This resolution proposed that the President should proclaim a week during the first 10 days in May of 1979 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. This joint resolution was passed by the House and the Senate, and was signed by President Jimmy Carter on October 5th, 1978, to become Public Law 95-419. And whereas, over the next decade, Presidents passed annual proclamations for Asian Pacific American Heritage Week until 1990, when Congress passed Public Law 101-283, which expanded the observance to a month. Finally, in 1992, Congress passed Public Law 102-450, which annually designated May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and was signed by George, by President George H.W. Bush. Although the idea is attributed to one woman, Jeannie Jew, Ms. Jew is a direct descendant of an Asian Pacific American immigrant, and pointed out the lack of acknowledgement for all that the Asian Pacific American people have contributed to the United States of America. And whereas, the month of May is significant and was selected, and is, and as it commemorates the first immigration by the Japanese in 1843, as well as the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in 1869, where most of the workers were Chinese immigrants. From 1883 to 1943, the Chinese Exclusion Act, and later the Giri Act, continued to bear its weight on the Asian Pacific American community by setting caps on how many immigrants could enter the country, and outlandish identification regulations that if not followed would end in deportation. These racially-driven acts only intensified biases and led to awful events like the Chinese massacre of 1871 and the San Jose Chinatown fire. And whereas, the City of Kyle acknowledges these past wrongdoings on the Asian Pacific American people, and urges its citizens to practice inclusivity through celebrating the contributions of its Asian Pacific American community by honoring their history, people, and culture. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Kyle that the month of May 2021 should be celebrated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and appreciative of the many achievements of Kyle's Asian Pacific American community, and those across the nation and its history.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thanks. I'd like to share just a personal comment.
Sure.
Dex asked me to do this, and I'm very nervous, if you can't tell. So the coronavirus pandemic has impacted, impacted all of humanity, but has disproportionately affected the Asian Pacific American population through anti-immigrant disease rhetoric. This is displayed through politics and key leaders from all fields, addressing the coronavirus pandemic and the Chinese, as the Chinese flu and Wuhan viruses. Using such racially-charged rhetoric only reinforces ignorant behavior and divides the country into "them and us" mentality. The truth is, the United States of America, and has, the United States of America is and always has been a country of immigrants. The Asian Pacific American community has made significant contributions to this country and deserve to be recognized and celebrated for it. I believe now, more than ever, we should celebrate our differences, and remember that together is where we harness our strength to fight for a better and more inclusive society. Thank you to the City of Kyle City Council, and specifically Councilman Dex Ellison, for fostering an environment where all people are equally represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. That was well-written.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might add, Danielle is very humble, and I know she was very nervous writing this. She put the weight of the world on her shoulders, as it's, this was something outside of her comfort zone. Danielle is also a veteran. She served in our military, and, you know, it's, it's something really special for her to have stepped forward and done this. She has a great love for this country, and the people of Kyle, and the people she works with, and it was certainly my honor to help sponsor this. And that has been the, a large breadth of what we were trying to have in these dialogues and conversations, and bringing forward people that maybe we don't hear from. And so I love and appreciate everything that she said. I think that her words were spot-on, and thank you, Danielle, for stepping outside your comfort zone and doing this for us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
All right, next up, National Economic Development Week proclamation, and celebrating the 15-year anniversary of the creation and impact of the Economic Development Department. We're going to save the proclamation until the end. We got a presentation by our one and only, Diana. Go ahead.
If you'll bear with me for a second, I'm going to have to do this presentation through Screen Central? I mean, Ring Central?
Do you want to get Victoria and Lauren in?
Oh, yeah.
They're coming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diana Torres, Director of Economic Development, for the record. We are celebrating the 15-year anniversary of the Economic Development Department of the City of Kyle. We also have the Economic Development Week coming up next week, and so we thought that this would be a great time to go over some of our accomplishments, and kind of update not just the Council, but also the community, on how different the City of Kyle is now than it was in 2005. So the City of Kyle Economic Development Department in 2005 was a bedroom, the City of Kyle was a bedroom community, and it is a community that had grander plans for itself. The Economic Development Department was created, then, to lead the charge in business development, job creation, transitioning to a full-service community. It was a broad focus on growing all amenities, local availability of goods and services, diversification of housing, business development, and economic development. The Economic Development Department is now more focused on growing and improving the local ecosystem, and building its position as an employment center. We are working to bridge the gaps between Kyle's pool of talent and the lack of local employment opportunities, and diversifying the tax base to serve a growing population. The vision for the City of Kyle Economic Development is setting the stage for development I'm going to throw some numbers at you here that may be surprising to some, and not to others, but I think that they're pretty impressive. 533%, that's the growth rate of the City of Kyle from 2000 to 2015. 30%, we are only 30% developed out in the City of Kyle. So if we think about how much we've grown over the past 15 years, think about how much more we're going to grow in the future. And so thinking about it in a very smart and diligent way is the really smart thing and best thing to do for our community. So at 30% developed property, we have lots of opportunities for any and all kinds of projects still available in the City of Kyle. 890. 890% is the increase in sales tax revenues since 2005. I remember when I came, one of my very first City Council meetings, they were celebrating the fact that they had broken $1 million for the year. And now we are at $1 million a month. So we've come a long way. 1,000%. 1,000% is the increase in property tax revenues to the city over the past 15 years. So that doesn't mean we're raising the taxes, that just means more people are coming, and they're building more houses and buying more houses, so just to clarify that. 2 million. We have 2 million square feet of newly constructed medical facilities, 2 million square feet of newly constructed retail facilities, and 2 million square feet of newly constructed industrial facilities. Over the past 15 years, that's pretty significant. Ascension Seaton Medical Center Hays was the catalyst to Kyle becoming a medical hub for Hays County in the South Austin region. We have grown from one primary care physician in 2005, just 12 years ago, to becoming a magnet for specialty care in the region, and this growing cluster. This state-of-the-art facility made great strides since opening in 2009, and is now providing Level 2 trauma care, had the inaugural open-heart and brain surgeries in Hays County, has a first-of-its-kind wellness and rehabilitation center, offering innovative care close to home, and an expanded maternity unit that was named Best Maternity Hospitals in 2021 by Newsweek. The hospital is also currently undergoing another expansion to add two more additional operating rooms, and continues to plan for the growing needs of the community. The growth in the healthcare sector has created well over 2,000 direct medical jobs for the community, and that does not include docs and physicians and specialists. With an additional 400, excuse me, 4,000-plus jobs created in created in the city through economic development projects over that timeframe, including Fortune 500 companies like Amazon, FedEx, and Lowe's. Some other notable wins over this time period is the triple freeport exemption being passed. Without the triple freeport exemption, the industrial space would never have happened. And we would not be in the great position that we're in right now, working with projects. We have streamlined the incentive and application supplemental process. We have engaged Hays CISD and the CTE program and other regional partners. We now have local higher education. We have partnerships with other higher education, and we created a business retention and expansion program. ACC is a huge workforce development asset in our community. It opened in the spring semester of 2014 with a max capacity of 2,000 students. The day the doors opened, it had 1,200 students enrolled. So they quickly moved on to their Phase 2 plans, which they didn't think they were going to have to do so soon. And the Phase 2 plans offered a unique first responders training center. That facility in Kyle offers a broad selection of college classes for university transfer and career training, core curriculum classes needed to earn a college degree, workforce programs in emerging industries and high-demand careers, and developmental education to achieve college readiness. We also have a program with the Texas State University called Pathways. A lot of people are not familiar with this, but it's a great advantage to us. This offers a variety of activities and services through both institutions, ACC and Texas State and our high schoolers, that you can be enrolled simultaneously and be getting credit at Texas State at the same time. First-year students can even live in the Texas State residence halls. This saves students' tuition, helps them earn their degrees more quickly, and is a seamless transition to earning a bachelor's degree. We have gone from receiving one to two requests for proposals or information a week to about one or two a day. We were managing 10, 20 on a good month economic development projects, and right now we are managing over 65. So our activity and interest in the city of Kyle is great and is going to continue. The things that you can look forward to coming soon. The results to the Texas MBA candidate study. Some of you may have heard of it. We haven't presented it yet because we were kind of waiting for this. We have it recorded. These Texas State MBA candidates did their capstone project analyzing the economic and business benefits to the city of Kyle over the past 15 years. When they presented it, they do it in a competition manner, and our team won. So we're very proud of them. So we'll be sharing all that with you. There's a video, a time-lapse video included, and a lot of data. We worked with them for several months on that project. The next thing is our new, development of our new website. I'm going to have to switch to it real quick. Give me one second. So the new website is going to be rolled out. This is not working with me here. The new website is going to be rolled out during Economic Development Week. I guess I need to do a stop share first. Here we go. Maybe? There we go. So the new economic development website is going to be rolled out during International Economic Development Week. The work on the backend or on the interior content is still continuing right now, but here's the sneak peek. Let me see if I can scroll here for you. Yeah, it's working. So where it all comes together is actually directly tied to a quote given by Amazon regarding Kyle and the area. They said, "In order for us to locate in that area, three things had to come together: talented local workforce, customer demand, and support and good leadership in the community." That's a very compelling statement. So we felt like it was appropriate to have Where It All Comes Together on the very front of our webpage. These two photos, if you could see where my pointer is, this one and this one, will be active videos. So when it becomes live, you'll be able to click on it, and they'll become videos. Why Kyle will also be a video. More Than Home. So you may have seen this hashtag a time or two. 2005, we were home. Everyone thought of us as a bedroom community. Well, that wasn't our goal. We weren't content with that. And so we have been working to show people that we are more than home. We want our citizens to realize that we are more than home, and we want business opportunities and investment to realize we are more than home. And today, we are more than home. If we keep scrolling down, here is where we have open space. These will be some of the really highly sought-after tools by companies that are looking for investing in the area and by site-selection consultants. And then here's our map. This is going to zoom in to bounce into Kyle when this goes live. Here's just some of the rough stats. And then down here is what I'm really excited about. We've been looking for a while.
Julianne Pauline.
Yeah, it's a great photo and a great couple, great business there. So we have been working on trying to get together step by step very clearly, how do you open a business in Kyle? Well, now it's going to be front and center on our homepage, and you'll be able to click on Start Now, and it's going to take you through the step-by-step process. Any questions on that homepage? No?
It looks great, Diana. It looks great.
Thank you. So that's all of the presentation. But that's what we really want people to go away with is that Kyle is a much different community now than it was in 2005. And in development terms, it has moved at warp speed. And when we were considered a bedroom community, we were not content with that, and we still are not. And so that is our goal, is to go out and continue to get these drivers in the economy to come in and create good jobs and to be more than home and have everybody think of Kyle as more than home. And then we have a video, just to close it out. Beth Blank Torres, the Director of Economic Development for the city of Kyle. So the city of Kyle decided in 2005 to create an economic development department. So a lot has changed over the last 15 years, obviously. But the city of Kyle was roughly 9,000 people at the time, and we are quickly approaching 58,000 right now. The past couple of years, we've had about 8 percent growth rate over an annual period, and that's continuing over the next few years at least. My very first week on the job, we watched them install the Pi on top of the Pi company. The staff was really small then. And so the main office was next door to a mobile home trailer. The building department was in the trailer. And they moved me into an office in the building next door, which is now dispatch. And I shared an office with the finance director, who was only like a part-time contractor, and the mayor at the time. And whoever got there first got to use the computer. And then whoever was left either stood at the tall filing cabinets or he found somewhere else to go. So to go from there, and then I was actually on this committee for this building to be constructed. So it's kind of cool. My name is on the building outside. To take part in that was really interesting. It kind of fell under the any and all other duties at the time, helping pick out furniture and pick out carpet and paint colors. And to be at the point where we're already exceeding the capacity of this building is kind of mind-blowing because we built with excess at the time in mind. And so now that we have grown so quickly, it's just been kind of astronomical. A lot of downtown has changed. The lighting, the sidewalks, the pavers, none of that was there 15 years ago. So it's always interesting to talk to people that haven't lived here that long. And the average citizen has lived in Kyle for five years or less. And so when they're asking, "Why don't we have this?" or "Why don't we have this?" or "Why don't we have this?" When we put it in perspective, what we didn't have and how quickly we've gotten it, it's usually very surprising to people. In '05, we didn't even have three overpasses. So in 2007, we had the groundbreaking to the hospital. We had the grand opening to HEB Plus. And we had flipped the switch to our very first traffic light in the city of Kyle, all in the same summer. So that was kind of a significant pivotal moment in Kyle's time. And so if you think like in development terms, 15 years to have, go from your first stoplight to where we are now. So I mentioned the hospital, the retail. Those are things that we didn't have before at all. Now we have about 2 million square feet of newly constructed medical facilities that has created about 2,000 medical jobs, not counting docs and specialists. In retail terms, we have almost 2 million square feet of retail that has either been developed or underdeveloped since then. And then in terms of industrial and really primary jobs, we have focused on target markets and advanced manufacturing, biomedical, destination recreation. And class A office space is kind of our next move to be able to support the community that's here. Very mindful of whatever lands here today is going to be here for a really long time. So we want to make sure that we are putting on the ground something that is going to be long-term and sustainable and what the community will support. The past 15 years, being able to experience the types of projects and the diversity of projects in one community is kind of unheard of in the position that I'm in as Director of Economic Development in just one community at that period of time. I've gotten to experience this entire community change and to be part of that and play a role, and that has been really exciting. And to be able to watch some of the projects that we've talked about for years come to fruition is really exciting.
The end?
The end. Any questions?
That was a great video. 15 years goes by fast when you're having fun, right?
That's right.
Yeah, I thought everything you said there was pretty much exactly right, too, as far as the right perspective to have for economic development. I was really struck by what you said about whatever comes is going to be here for a long time because I think that's the weight we all feel when we're trying to make hard decisions on how we handle development opportunities. So setting that standard is something we're certainly all very interested in, and our Economic Development Department is a great tip of the sword, making that happen. So I have a proclamation. Does anybody want to add anything before I read the proclamation?
Can I just recognize the rest of my staff is back there in the green shirts? Lauren Lyons and Victoria Vargas is the rest of my staff. They're the ones who keep me straight. And then I actually have some board members and past board members here as well. So just wanted to recognize them. Thank you for coming.
Councilor Ellison, go ahead.
Thank you, brother.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diana. I was just about to say we should recognize the rest of your team, Victoria and Lauren. They've done an excellent job as well. I did see Tony and Brian out there as well that have been on our Economic Development Board. Your presentation was fantastic. It was spot-on. I agree with what the mayor said. I just wanted to tell a really quick personal story is, I'm very appreciative of Diana's experience and institutional knowledge that she brings to this department and to the city. I remember before I was elected official and I was on planning and zoning and coming and speaking with Diana and really hearing more about the vision and what we were trying to do within the Economic Development Department that really is the one department that brings revenues back to the city and is working hard. And sometimes we don't always hear from them, but they are always on the grind. And so I just want to thank you, Diana, and Victoria, and Lauren, and our Economic Development Board for what you all do, and major kudos. And here's to 15 more years and beyond.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. Diana, just wanted to say from a longtime resident here in Kyle, seeing the city when I was here, the small town when it was 2,000 people, to see where it's at now and to see you and your team do such a remarkable and fantastic job of bringing these businesses and these companies and getting the plan together. I cannot personally thank you enough for all your hard work and your dedication to this city. And it's great to see the growth and seeing the numbers so that the residents can really see where we're at. And for those who are saying, "Why don't we have this yet? Why don't we have that yet?" and so forth, it's coming. But at the same time, just look at our progress, where we came from, our small town to where we are, thriving city. And I can't thank you enough and your team and everybody else on your, to be able to bring all that to our city. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Councilor Flores, Kyle. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. And then I want to clarify that when you say more than home, so people are very clear. I see you and I see you working. And what that means is you're trying to make the city of Kyle independent and strong and self-sufficient so we don't have to rely on anybody else. I mean, a good quality of life is important, and feeling safe in your town is important. And we do that by being financially stable. So you and your team do an excellent job. I've seen firsthand. I've seen, and I've been on the other side, and I wondered why. Why do we give these tax breaks to people? And then, and the same time, I want this here. But you can't have both. So you do a really good job of balancing all the craziness. So thank you, and thank you to your team.
Thank you.
Councilor Bradshaw.
I just want to piggyback off of everything that has already been said. You, economic development is a passion of mine here in Kyle. And I feel like you have done, you and Victoria and Lauren, you have done such an amazing job just within the past five years in what you've done to the city and how we have grown economically. It's been incredible to watch and unfold. And I am just so thankful that we have such a forward-thinking economic development department. And please just keep doing whatever magic you are doing to bring all of these wonderful jobs and goods and services to Kyle.
We will.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, Diana, just to add a little bit to what everybody said is, you know, one of the things to think about is I've been commuting to Austin for 27 years to work. And we are a bedroom community, but that's changed, and it's changing every day. As I still drive to Austin every day, I think about the traffic and what we can do to mitigate it. And we're doing that here in the city of Kyle. Thanks to your team, we're, one day, move forward to where we can live, work, and play in Kyle. And we won't have to travel outside the city for anything. And that's what my vision, I think the city council's vision, not mine, city council vision and what the residents' vision is of Kyle. And I just want to thank you for you and your team working so hard to bring that forward one day where residents won't have to leave Kyle to work or any amenities that are needed. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Photo? Y'all want to come up for a photo with the balloons and everything? So... So... All right, I have the road projects presentation up next, but I'm going to wait, Leon. Actually, I'm going to do citizen comments first. It's a little out of order, so unless there are any objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you keep your comments to, limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have three who have registered to speak. First up, Ms. Vanessa Westbrook.
Good evening. You may remember me. I was the chair of the renaming committee. I look forward to seeing those new signs. I can drive by and say, oh, I had something to do with that. I led a 15-member committee, which originally was supposed to have been seven, in coming up with the, what I believe was something that the city took and said, wow, good, let's move on now. What I'm here today for is because I wanted to note that Kyle has a wonderful problem. I know it's an oxymoron, but it happens. A wonderful problem is when, or is, you have a lot of citizens who want to do their civic duty and serve on committees and those kinds of things. And you've actually had an opportunity where you got quite a few applications for positions and might add their volunteer positions. But there's a bit of confusion, and I'm hoping that perhaps it can be clarified for me because I'm confused. So when we put together, when the ad hoc committee was put together, basically the call went out. People applied, people were put on the committee, the committee did their job, et cetera. Well, other instances have come up when that's not the case. And so the idea is that a lot of people have applied to do or be on a committee, serve on a board, or serve on a commission. And there is a degree of unclarifying components. You fulfill the requirements that are listed, but then a process was thrown in where you get an interview, but it's not clarified how you get an interview. And so those who want to serve will say, well, what do I have to do to get an interview? Because I don't know what that is. And so if we want to continue having our citizens wanting to serve their civic duty, in the words of what was just said, Kyle is a much different community. I think we need to look at this idea of how people who apply for volunteer positions are looked at in regards to getting such a position. Because I heard something that was said that was a little conflicting. The more people, the merrier. Okay, got that. We have too many applying. Okay, got that. What is it do I need to get an interview in order to get on a committee that I want to volunteer my time and energy for? So I just want us to kind of get some clarification as to how exactly does that work and share it with the rest of the class. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Next up, Eric West.
I can speak fairly loud, especially because I'm quite upset. About seven years ago, I came to your city. I helped your Kyle Police Department with ADA and handicap parking and the problem that is still relevant. But your city police department is not ADA compliant. And it wasn't six years ago when I came. And I told the city. The city chose to do nothing. You're talking about all this developing you're doing and bringing in new business and all, that's wonderful. But you're also bypassing all the handicapped people and all your handicapped citizens because you're not being handicapped compliant. And that's not totally your fault because navigating ADA is hard. It's not easy. I try to be a bridge between the handicapped community and the business and government community trying to be ADA compliant. You have other problems in your city that are also making you non-ADA compliant that I mentioned six years ago. And the several things that I've mentioned have not, one of them has been addressed, not one, in six years. So I'm kind of concerned about how fast you're growing and who you're leaving behind. This isn't fair. It needs to change. And I'm going to keep coming back and making sure that change starts happening because your handicapped citizens are just as important as any other citizen.
All right, thank you, Mr. West. All right, next up, Mr. Aaron Marshon. Did I get that right?
No. Okay, no. No. I'm not going to lie, I picked the wrong handicap. I'm glad I was here for this all.
It's okay. No, it's fine. Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Aaron Marshon.
Marshon, okay.
Mm-hmm. A couple of years back, there was a parking problem with the Lehman High School folks parking in South Lake Ranch. We went through and got no parking signs put in. That's great. I'm trying to figure out now how to get an agenda item to actually have some of those signs removed. There are signs, first of all, the parking problem, the school addressed it. They actually, you know, bridged the two parking lots, so traffic flow is much better. We don't have as big of an issue with parking anymore. It was always meant to be a temporary measure to stop this anyways. So our police have far better things to do than try and deal with a parking complaint here or there for an issue that's not really an issue anymore. So I'd like to get something on an agenda and find out if I need signatures or what I need to do to start the process of getting some of these removed.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, those are the only forms that I have filled out. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, agenda item number 10, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation, Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Wanted to kind of mention a couple of things before I started. The weather over the last few days has kind of slowed up some of our contractors, so we're not going to see a lot of progress from some of those particular contracts that we're working on. The other thing that we're encountering is pipe materials are really getting difficult to find and hard to find. So some of our contractors are struggling with locating good supplies of pipe in some cases because of the plastic that's required in that pipe that we use. So the plant's shut down obviously during that freeze that we had, and so they're having a hard time getting back and catching up with their orders that they have. So we're starting to see some of that happening out with some of our contractors now. Berson Street, I talked to our project manager today about this. She says she probably has another couple of months to work with the contractor. They're still working on some change orders. She's got some issues with a little bit of a parking space up in front of the Krug area, so she's working on that to resolve that. But she's still trying to get this project closed out so we can get our ass built and close it out completely. The Windy Hill Street project, based on the current estimate, we're at 58% complete. They are driving on the south side of the road right now, and they are working on the north half, improving the drainage structure, extending the drainage structure, and also building that road on the north side. We're estimating about four months to complete that project. South Side Wastewater Improvements, they're about 78% complete, and we still need to get that driveway paved by the pause facility. They're finished with the manholes, and we're hoping they start in front of the Texas Department of General Justice and start installing that line in front of their area there so we can finish up this project. Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion, they've been slowed down also. In fact, I believe there was no work done today. It was just too wet out there and too muddy, so they had to shut it down. But they're still trying to pick it up and continue working on Saturdays. We'll continue working until they catch up with their schedule. So the design that we asked for, for the de-watering feature that we're going to be installing later, is under review right now. We still anticipate we'll complete this project on time. This photograph, you can kind of see where all the water is, so it's just been a big mess out there lately. Bunton Creek Interceptor, we're about 43% complete on this particular project. Will mention that this project, once it's completed, there's two more things that we have to do to this project to have a completely working system. There's two lift stations located on this project. There's a South Lake Lift Station, there's a Bunton Creek Village Lift Station. As we complete this line, we need to decommission those two lift stations and tie in those sewer lines to that new interceptor. So we'll probably be asking the contractor to consider the cost for decommissioning those two lift stations, so we'll probably be coming to council with that. On the Will Site Number Four, we're still at the 89% complete. The contractor hasn't turned any, his last estimate. We do have a estimate that we've gotten from him to redo this predictor tower and redo the lettering and add another logo on that, and also the work that's going to be done on the downtown elevated. So he had to revise his numbers, and hopefully we'll bring that to you at the next council meeting. Old Post Road, they got delayed by the rain. Visited with the county superintendent, and they had gotten their first three layers of base in and were working on the last layer, and that, they got halted by the rain. So they'll start trying to wrap that up within a couple of weeks also. Elliott Branch Interceptor, we're still at 15% against. This one's been slowed down by the weather, so hopefully we'll be able to start and keep moving on with this one. The Roundabout, they did start construction Monday, May the 3rd, and so the, from what we understand, the curbing is out, and they've been placing some concrete already. So they're moving forward with that. Anticipated completion is May the 19th on this one. Paramount Subdivision, they're approximately 90% complete. They have curb and gutter end, and I anticipate that they'll start putting their oil down and start paving fairly soon. According to the developer, they think it will take another two weeks for them to wrap it up. Wanted to mention one of the consent agenda items, the flood study on Bunton Branch. This is about a four-mile stretch of Bunton Branch that we want to have half and associates look at. We're requesting council approval to approve this contract. They will be looking at delineating the new 100-year floodplain based on the ALIS 14 requirements that we now have with those higher rainfall rates and also using some new topo that we have. So that may change those 100-year floodplains, which does affect several projects downstream between Lehigh and Daisy Lane. I do want to mention that Mr. Harper Wilder has some comments on some of the other consent agendas, so I'll let him come up and do his part.
Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Mayor and Council, I have four items on consent agenda. That would be 15, 16, 17, and 18. These are all related to our street construction crew. These are previously approved construction equipment. The first one's the distributor, tack and emulsion is for the asphalt and the chip seal. This one goes directly with number 16. Number 16 is the chip spreader. The third one, which is item 17, is the smooth wheel finish roller. And number 18 is the pneumatic roller. Those are the four items.
All right, thank you, Harper.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody have any questions for Harper or Leon on any of the items?
I have a question.
Councilor Flores, Kale.
15, 16, 17, 18, are those in our current budget? Thank you.
Same question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Consent Agenda. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, is there anything anyone would like to pull?
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item Number 11.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, to approve Consent Agenda Items 12 through 20.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve Consent Agenda Items Number 12 through 20. Is there any discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 11, amend the joint use agreement for HCSD parking facilities. This is for Mr. Sellers, but Mr. Ellison, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Could we get the Exhibit 8 on the screen? I just wanted to make sure, this is just a clarifying thing real quick, and then I'll make a motion to approve. So currently...
Scott's got it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Okay, so just wanted to clarify. So currently, what's in the yellow rectangle there, that's what's currently in the contract. What I'm understanding, because it's a little hard to read, actually it's better and easier to read a little bit there, maybe not so much the yellow, but that red square, the A1, one and a half, a little more than one and a half acres, that's what the contractor's proposing, just to add that section to be part of the contract with the landscaper to maintain, correct? Scott.
Mayor, Council, Scott, serves us for record. So the box in red was actually previously voted upon by council and the school board. That was part of a shared use agreement for parking facilities, and then the city would also maintain that area. We had then engaged WLE to do landscaping services on the entire PAC property, Premier Area Center property, which includes the yellow. So this addendum basically formalizes that agreement that we have with WLE, and we'll go back to the school board.
So just a real quick clarifying point. So what section was added?
So the red was already approved. We're adding the yellow in this addendum.
Gotcha. So I had it in reverse. Okay. And then roughly, what would be the split between the school board and the city?
In this case, the city is paying, or the TERS ultimately, since this is a TERS funded agreement, but WLE is being retained by, ultimately, the TERS, reimbursed by the TERS for the maintenance of that yellow portion in its entirety. So this is not a financial encumbrance on the school board or the school.
Gotcha. It's more or less just to allow us to maintain that area?
Yes, sir. That's exactly.
That's why they're involved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions, motions?
Mayor, motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 11?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve Agenda Item Number 11. Is there any discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 21, Consider Possible Action. First reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, adopting an amendment to the city's 2010 comprehensive plan, providing for the amendment of the plan by including manufactured home subdivision District M2 and manufactured home park M3 to the Newtown Community Land Use District. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Howard Coons, I'm the Community Development Director for the record. These first two items are similar, but they are separate and distinct, and that's why we brought them as two different items. The first item we are talking about tonight is a text amendment to the comprehensive plan of 2010. I'm going to share my screen so that I can put up some visuals. I want to be able to show, what you're looking at is the future land use map that is incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan, and this is updated as late as 2017. The property in question is located in the Newtown community. I guess I should back up. We had a client come forward that wants to purchase and develop a piece of land. If you can see my cursor, it's this piece of land right here. It's along BB Road, east of I-35, west of Dacey Lane. It's adjacent to the Roberts property, Trailer Park, that's up there on the southwest corner of Dacey and BB. It's actually outside of the corporate limits of the city of Kyle. It is a hole in a donut of incorporated property that surrounds it, and it is directly adjacent to a piece of property that they already own and operate. They want to purchase this land, annex the land into the city, have appropriate zoning assigned, so that they can incorporate the land to the adjacent property, which is already residential, manufactured home residential. When discussing with staff, we found that in the Newtown community, there was no provision to ask for M2 or M3. Any form of manufactured housing was not either recommended or conditionally recommended for the district. And they asked if we would be able to start a text amendment that would allow for the consideration of M2 and M3 in the Newtown community. So staff did an evaluation, which you can see, actually, that's in the staff report, and we found that we support the idea of being able to create an amendment that allows for the question to be asked and for the opportunity for the applicant to come forward, for a number of reasons, most notably that the properties that are adjacent that they operate, for lack of a better term, are somewhat non-conforming for the way that they are on the ground and operating in the district, but are not recommended for zoning in the district. So we'd like to bring that into conformance in that area of the city. So this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they had two public hearings, and they voted six to nothing, which was unanimous at the time, to recommend the M2 and M3 text change to the Newtown community on the city's future land use map. So I can make myself available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Howard. Does anybody have any questions? This reminds me of, we had to do this once downtown, not too long ago, correct? We had a similar situation where you weren't even able to make a recommendation one way or the other because of the map, so makes sense.
That's correct, and even if this were to successfully pass this evening, this does not assign any rights or privileges for a land use category by zoning to the property, it just allows for the discussion to be had.
Right. Any questions? Councilmember Floris Cale?
I just have a comment. I'm pretty hesitant to make any amendments to this comprehensive plan, because we have, I've heard several times that people say, "We don't need a new comprehensive plan, it's not Bible, it's, we don't need it." So, and I feel like we're 10 years out, we're 10 years overgrown. We are a city that certainly needs a plan. I mean, we plan our house, and we plan our future. I don't understand why we wouldn't plan a city. So with that said, I see there's two, and you just spoke of another time that you had to amend the comprehensive plan, and so that tells me we're probably not ready, we should just do a new comprehensive plan, and stop waiting, because we pay people hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a comprehensive plan. So I think it's kind of silly for us seven to make a decision on if this should be amended or not. A comprehensive plan also includes people living in the city and their feedback, and so that's what I would like to get, if we're going to amend the comprehensive plan, that should be included, but my ultimate goal would be to see a new comprehensive plan before we make any amendments.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? This item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. It is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Any further discussion or motions?
I have one thing, real quick. Howard, on 21 and 22, just a clarification. So basically, if this goes through, it's just allowing them to have the conversation to getting this to M2 to M3, in that area?
This item, 21, is separate from 22, and the considerations should be made separately. This item, Number 21, is a text amendment change to the language of the ordinance, or of the comprehensive plan itself. The next item will be a map amendment, which is similar but different, so that's why we've made these separate and brought them as two different items. But as far as this item, yes, this allows the discussion to go forward at all.
Yep, I just want to give a little bit of feedback on those comments, because I actually don't disagree with what you're saying. It's important to have a comprehensive plan, but this item is being brought forward for a specific reason, because there's a particular use within that area that sort of came in the back door. If you go and build a brand-new comprehensive plan, you're not going to guarantee that those kind of situations don't happen. But essentially, when we went through and looked at this particular area, we didn't consider it, I think, at the time, that there was that particular subdivision that's out there, that we didn't put into this. And so maybe a new comprehensive plan would pick that up, maybe it wouldn't, I'm not sure, but, you know, these kind of amendments to a comprehensive plan will happen if we get a brand-new one as well. I'm just saying, this won't affect that.
I would like to see if the comprehensive plan would allow for housing like this in other parts of Kyle as well, instead of just kind of all in one area.
Yeah, it's listed in several other of the categories, although admittedly, M2 and M3 are pretty sparse. This is one of the few subdivisions within our incorporated limits that are of this particular use, which I think why it didn't get very much attention back in 2017, when we updated this particular one. So I like it as conditional as well, so it certainly, I think certainly should be, because we have that use there established, so we should make it a conditional use. We know that the applicant is coming forward potentially to consider additional development, but we can discuss that at that time, so. Any other thoughts? Motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Ellison?
So I do remember the parcel that you're referring to downtown, that was an odd-shaped structure, and I know that was a big part of what we considered at that time. I understand why this item was brought forward, I have been listening to the planning and zoning meetings and their discussions. I think ultimately, this could be captured in a comprehensive plan, especially since we're talking about it now. Obviously, it is something that is aware of by staff, and now by us. I feel that with the comprehensive plan, a large part of that is the public input, and in putting that document together. And I was just going to ask Mr. Coons if there were any, obviously, every planning and zoning meeting is public, and there are public hearings, but were there any attempts to solicit public input outside of that?
No, sir. No, not as a function of this process. We followed the public hearing processes prescribed, you know, elsewhere in our code, in our charter, for advertisements in the newspaper. But no, there was no other efforts for outreach, other than adjoining property owners and the ad in the newspaper.
Understandable. And so with that being said, I think that, I appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission taking the initiative and effort, but it's a policy decision that needs to be made from the council level, to move forward with actually making a conscious effort towards updating our comprehensive plan, which a large part of that is, we'll get the comprehensive plan, then we'll get the code rewrites and things will fall into place after that, but a large part of building the comprehensive plan is soliciting input from our residents in our community, to give guidance, not to provide exactly what needs to be done, but it gives guidance to the elected officials on what the citizenry would like to see throughout the city. It also helps provide coverage for the elected officials from developers to go to the comprehensive plan and see the spirit of what the city is trying to do from the citizenry's input, rather than just what seven people that are elected temporarily want to see happen. And so that's why I really think that we should give a conscious effort and move forward with the comprehensive plan to solicit that input. And so I think we are obviously aware of it, we would be cognizant of this particular category to add to the comprehensive plan, I think we should wait for that.
Any other discussion?
I want to say, and I can give you some direction, but probably just from a perspective standpoint, in the 12 years that I had been a planner prior to coming to the city of Kyle, I probably oversaw, conservatively, I would say, six to eight future land use map amendments per year, in basically every other jurisdiction in which I ever worked. To come to Kyle and only undertake three map amendments in six years, I think, is outside of the norm. Future land use maps are accurate only in a very general sense. You know, we always talk about this being the 30 or the 50,000-foot view. And in that 30,000-foot view, you know, if you look at the entirety of the city, and the patchwork quilt of all the colors that are on it, it's highly accurate at that level. But when you start to drill down parcel by parcel, and you start to speak about allowances and the package of land rights that come from zoning, as they relate to individual landowners, development usually doesn't specifically find itself being very able, or easily able to spoon in to those allowable uses when you get down to that micro scale. So to the mayor's point earlier, these map amendments will continue irrespective of whichever document is put forward. I would think that they would happen more often as development pressure starts to ramp up, and to Councilman Ellison's point, this would be a policy decision at that point, because not every map amendment on a parcel level or on a block level would necessarily rise to the level of requiring public input from the community at large. The entirety of the map, yes, without question, I think we should reach out to the citizens, but when, even anything that's at a neighborhood level perhaps, but once you start to get down to the block group or the parcel itself, it becomes incumbent upon the councils themselves, because it's your map, it was adopted by the council, and it's up to you to be the steward.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you for that explanation, Howard. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Item 21 is written.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilor Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? We amend our comp plan, we amend our transportation plan, we amend our stormwater plan, we have another transportation plan amendment coming up, so. Anyway, any other discussion?
I just want to say, I'm not against it. I'm sorry, I'm not against it, and I think, I understand that there will be changes, and if our plan wasn't so old, I would be okay with that.
The land use map is four years old.
Okay.
We completely read it. Councilman Ellison was at the table, it's a new map, it's not the map that was passed when, in 2010. This map was created in 2017. There are three of us up here who went through it, so if there's anyone to blame, it's the group of people that were there that missed a particular zoning category, but that's not the right way to look at it, because we didn't miss anything, this is just a unique situation coming forward through the years, and we're amending it into the map. But this particular map was created in 2017, not 2010, so.
And those three members, those members at the time couldn't see what developers were coming in. I mean, we can't guess about what developments coming in, what developers are coming in. What we can do is our best guess, and that's what it is, is a best guess. We're never going to know who's going to come in, try to come into the city, Kyle. We just hope that we can steer the development in a way that's beneficial towards the residents who live here now, and in the future.
I don't think we should use...
Certainly understand that point.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, certainly understand that point. I think that this is something we could wait on and capture in the comprehensive plan. That is my point, and if it is a policy decision by this council to incorporate that, yes, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right, as far as the land use plan being developed. But that is a part of the larger part of the comprehensive plan, and there are other parts about that. And I get it, making those changes, but for me, I haven't seen from this body that that is a particular document that is being prioritized as something of importance to maintain and update. And so I'd like to see that policy aspect be put forward as a priority, in order to move forward with these types of changes.
Any other discussion?
Tobias?
Aye.
Flores Cale?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Coach?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Ellison?
No.
All right, motion passes five to two. Next up, Agenda Item Number 22, first reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, adopting an amendment to the city's 2010 comprehensive plan by amending a portion of the farm district to the regional node and to the new settlement land use district, providing for related matters. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
So this is a similar but different item. We have a property owner who has purchased land that is at the intersection of RR 150, Road Route 150, and Highway 21, so on the far eastern gateway of the city, way over on the eastern boundary. And currently, the way that the future land use map has designated that area, it is termed farm landscape. Part of that is because of the availability of water and wastewater, and part of it is just the low development density that was recognized at the time that the map was originally developed in 2010, and subsequent updates to and including 2017. Now, with the introduction of State Highway 21 being widened by the DOT into a more intense corridor, and the amount of traffic that is entering the city of Kyle from the eastern gateway along 150, the site selector has found that they are, what they want to do is place a large commercial site there. The farm landscape did not create an opportunity for them to ask for that, so what the applicant has come forward is looking for a map amendment. It does not need a text amendment to the comprehensive plan. There are already acceptable future land use character areas that meet their requirements, they just like to have one of those character areas assigned to their property. So to that end, and I'm going to share my screen, because I just realized I was looking at it, but you all couldn't see it. So I'm going to share my screen here, so you can see, so that the property that we're talking about here is 150, and 21 is here, this is the existing, I want to say it's a Shell station, I believe it's a Shell gasoline station, and this is a signalized intersection. The property in question is all of these acres here, and the property owners are looking to develop a commercial section here on the corner, and then more, what would likely be, potentially be residential back here behind it. Now, the city of Kyle is currently undertaking a future land use map amendment that will change the entire map itself. We've looked at this map and realized that our existing map did not match the boundaries of the city's extraterritorial... Um, we've looked at this map and realized that our existing map did not match the boundaries of the city's uh extraterritorial jurisdiction. In light of the fact that the city has now declared itself to be over fifty thousand in population, which has a commensurate expansion of uh extraterritorial jurisdiction. So this map is accurate from from twenty-seventeen, but not after the population growth. So um one of the things that the uh planning commission has looked at in their work sessions between the months of September and about November, I think, is when the the process ceased for a while, was for that this and this farm landscape would be expanded um to match the adjacent new settlement community. And then down at this intersection of twenty-one and one fifty, there would be a regional node placed on this, which um has higher intensity, which allows more dense residential and allows uh commercial to capture the fact that they'll have two hard corners in the city of Kyle um on these major corridors. The property owner is moving faster than the future land use map amendment. And so we've had some conversations with their development team and realized that what they're aiming for is exactly analogous to what the city has already proposed for these properties. So for that reason, the staff has been able to support their request to place uh the regional node and uh new settlement community on this property uh as it meets most of the plan of what it is that's coming forward uh organically through the future land use map process. So uh this was uh heard at two public hearings in front of the P and Z over the past month. And um Planning and Zoning voted six to nothing to support this request, and staff has further supported it. So if I can be available for any questions.
Thank you, Howard.
This also requires a public hearing.
Uh, correct, so this uh this item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's now closed. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mayor, it's Councilmember Rizzo. Uh, Howard, just real quick, please, I know there's no uh water, you mentioned there's no water or no septic in that area, is that correct?
Um, currently, we do not have septic down this far. The uh there is a septic line that comes down to the schools here, um but it's resized only for the school. And then they have their own lift station that goes back up one fifty, and it dumps into a manhole that's in front of Water Leaf. However, um county line, uh SUD, the S U D, is planning um to create a water uh wastewater treatment plant that is just on the east side of twenty-one, past the intersection of one fifty and twenty-one. And this area down here will likely fall into their service area. Um, as far as water goes, I don't believe that we have potable water service from the city of Kyle to this parcel yet. Uh, and I don't necessarily know what their plan is to to get um city water.
Okay, I I was familiar with the wastewater plant that's proposed in that uh side of twenty-one. I was just wondering what the timetable, do you know what the timetable on that wastewater plant is?
No, sir. No, I don't.
You don't?
I do know that the the developer has um stated uh an interest and a willingness to build septic. Um, that would be, you know, effectively temporary. Um, they would design it and construct it in such a way that they would be able to tie in to the public wastewater when it was available to them. And then they would be able to reclaim that tile field area um as additional development uh square footage to the lot after they they make this the switch over.
So that would be a large septic system, that tank that would incor- incorporate the entire development? Who would be responsible for uh emptying that septic system?
Emptying it?
Yeah, even when it gets full, cause it's a septic tank. It's a large septic tank, correct?
It wouldn't be a pumping hall, I I wouldn't expect. Um, my my expectation would be that it would be diffused either uh on grade or below grade. That that's what the the tile field would be.
Okay, so that's good. That's what I was wondering. I was thinking there's a pumping hall, just making sure the city wasn't gonna be on the hook for that.
No, sir. No, that that wouldn't be our responsibility. It would be uh designed and approved by uh Hayes County Health Department. They would also do the inspections during its construction. Um, and uh maintaining it after the fact would would be the responsibility of the property owner.
And if it's a septic system, do they have to uh maintain a certain square footage per home?
I'm sorry, did you say per home?
Yeah, per homes, I'm thinking, or is it, cause it's a so, cause it's one big system?
I've I've only heard the plan that would be for the for the the commercial development.
Okay, so it's just commercial. It's just all commercial, there are no residential. So I thought I'd seen some residential there as well. So it's all commercial then?
They're they're looking for an assignment. They're looking for a a a future land use map assignment of new settlement, which is primarily uh residential, that's um recommended and conditional. There are some um less intense commercial districts that are also recommended and um conditionally recommended in new settlement. But right now, I think the the onus of this application came forward from the property owner because they're interested in developing uh this regional node portion on the corner.
Okay, so that new settlement was telling me all. All right, I appreciate it, Howard. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Tobias.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Howard, the they uh mentioned uh commercial use that they're trying to get. Do you have any idea what kind of commercial properties they're trying to bring to that area? Cause that's on the corner of one fifty and twenty-one, correct?
It is.
Like by their sign? By the city of Kyle sign?
A shop, a regional shopping center to to capture the traffic that goes along twenty-one and one fifty and and service the rooftop rooftops in the vicinity.
Okay, like retail services or uh but not another gas station, cause I think there's one across the street already, correct?
I can't say that they wouldn't have a fuel station or a convenience store as a part of the overall project, but I don't believe that that's the anchor, no, sir.
Okay.
Although it it would be allowable if if this regional node were assigned. The next step is for them to come back and ask for zoning. Um, so it it would it would have to be um appropriate zoning would be assigned to it. And RS uh would be an appropriate zoning and regional node. In fact, it would be one of the preferable zonings in the regional node. And in the regional node, uh fuel stations and convenience stores are permissible by right.
How many acres um are they looking at, do you know, in that area?
Uh, I wanna say it was hundred and two. So the the total property, as you can see on the map right now, that's that's a hundred and two acres. The portion of it that's being assigned for regional node is listed in the text as.
Maybe I missed it.
I thought it was in the high teens, but I don't want to be wrong. I thought it was in there. It's not. It might be in the application. I can find it for you.
Is that the twenty acres?
The twenty acres closest to the intersection be placed? Yes, that's, yeah, I know it was in there. Yeah, it's so so twenty of the hundred and one hundred and two. Thank you.
Mayor. Go ahead. I can add just a little bit on the question about utilities. Both water and wastewater would be provided by county line. Property and sales tax go to Kyle. Correct. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. I have a question first of all. So and and number twenty-two, we're going to amend the regional regional node and the land use district. Is that correct? No?
No, we're gonna.
This item, number twenty-two, is is an amendment to the future land use map to assign these two existing character areas to these properties.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Okay, so I obviously misread that. Okay, all right, just let me state that I'm kinda confused that for number twenty-one, the future land map was new enough that it was okay to amend. And for twenty-two, I think it's kinda odd that it's out of date and we need to amend. So I, it, again, a comprehensive plan for me would be helpful to know how our residents and how we should make this city look. So I'm kinda hesitant.
Councilperson Ellison.
Mayor, thank you. Um, so um another item that I actually agree with uh personally, um just would like to see us make a commitment to uh an amendment to our comprehensive plan and get the the public input. It was stated earlier too, I just wanna make a clarifying point uh for accuracy. If the land use plan was uh created in twenty-seventeen, correct?
Amended.
Amended in twenty-seventeen. Um, I was elected in November of twenty-seventeen, so none of us besides Mr. Mitchell would have been on council at the that time of that amendment and voted on that amendment as an elected official. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clarifying point. But um, once again, I think uh staff has made uh valid points on this. And certainly, all those uses uh would be uh allowable, uh including RS and including including uh a fuel station and different things like that. Uh, but I think, you know, as far as a node goes, that that is an appropriate place for uh a a regional node. Um, I just, once again, just uh not trying to be combative, I'm just simply humbly asking of the council to make a commitment to um in in soliciting public input and and making an earnest effort to create a comprehensive plan or funding and and also being involved in the creation of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, any other comments? Questions or motions?
Mayor, motion to approve agenda item number twenty-two?
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-three, uh first reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas annexing twenty-five point two acres of land, more or less, located in Hayes County, including the abutting streets, roadways, and rights of way into the corporate city limits of Kyle. Uh, this is the Jansen track. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons.
This is the um voluntary annexation petition from the property owners of the land that's located at the corner of Go Fourth Road and Bunton Lane. It's actually the, I'll call it the northeast corner. Um, and this is the state process of coming through um for public hearings in front of the mayor and council to accept their petition for annexation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coons. Uh, this item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing none, uh, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Um, any questions for Mr. Coons, comments, or motions? Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem. Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Uh, motion passes six to zero uh on agenda item, the one we just uh did before that on the land use map. Does anybody wanna object to make it come back for a second reading, or do we want it to be finally passed? All right, seeing none, it's finally passed. Um, I'm gonna take the next items out of order. Uh, after the transfers, we're gonna move to items number twenty-five. We're gonna take them up together and postpone them. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Um, we're gonna bring those up together. There's been some discussion about some of the agreements underlying these deals with the uh developer. We wanna make sure that all these contracts uh as they move forward, move forward um where we understand every uh detail before we move forward. And so because of that, I think we need to postpone those items until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, uh, so with that, I'd like to make a make that in form of motions. Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Ellison. Is there discussion on that motion? All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Uh. Mayor, we still need tw- item twenty-four. Yeah, all right, I'm gonna let MPT take that one. Okay.
Okay, item number twenty-four, consider possible action to amend the transportation master plan. Uh, Leon Barba, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor, uh Mayor Protem and Council Leon Barba, city engineer. This particular item is a request to um uh amend the uh transportation master plan by deleting the amendment number four. Amendment number four, if I can get the picture of the man, there you go, thank you. Amendment number four originally was intended to uh provide a connection between Kyle Parkway and Beebe. And the intent was to, if you'll notice, it's I thirty-five is northbound, so if you're coming off Beebe to get back to that uh industrial area where Lowe's and all the rest of those restaurants are, you have to make a complete loop to get around uh I thirty-five to get back to that area. So that was the initial intent of amendment number four that was approved back in October of twenty-seventeen, I believe. Um, so one of the problematic issues with this particular assignment is that uh the road by Lowe's is is a private road. So if if we were able to connect that section there at the button, I'm sorry, at the creek back towards Beebe, uh we'd still have to try to negotiate and make that a public road, so that would be problematic. So the intent is to go ahead and delete this amendment. And we do, as you may know, uh we do have a consultant working on updating our master plan, transportation master plan. And we've asked him to specifically look at this area a lot lot closer and and come up with a better recommendation. Uh, you do have uh Seton Parkway right there, does have a stub street, so it seems like that's a logical way to tie into Beebe Road. It's it's um that we don't have to worry about a a private road either, so that may be one of the recommendations we get from the consultant. But we also want him to look at not only the north-south, but maybe the east-west connection in there on the north side of the creek. So we want them to look at it very hard and come back with a recommendation to council.
Any, thank you, any discussion on the?
Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, Leon, it's Councilmember Rizzo. Just uh, I would like you all to keep in mind that we are looking at these roadways to make sure they're wide enough. Um, and also incorporates some walkability as well. Uh, just keeping everybody safe in that area is probably a top priority. Uh, I I know that's something that uh I think all of council is looking at is uh making sure that we're making roads that are gonna sustain future growth and also uh give us that walkability throughout the city.
Councilmember, that's one of the focuses we've asked the consultant to look at very strongly. In fact, we're trying to bring back to you at the next council meeting a presentation of where we are with that particular study. And uh we're hoping that council can give us some additional recommendations on that. This will be our opportunity to let our consultant know that that's what we're looking for.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Leon.
Any more discussion, or anybody you'd like to make a motion?
Mayor, anyone make a motion to go ahead and approve, consider the possible action to amend the transportation master plan?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tobias. I have a second by uh Councilmember Bradshaw. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
If uh, Scott, if you'd let uh the mayor know that he can come back in here? Item number thirty, requ- request council to assign a task force uh to review, revise, and update boards and commissions policy. Uh, Councilmember Dex Ellison, this is your item.
Thank you. Uh, so uh a couple of council meetings meetings back, we had a discussion about the policy for the boards and commission. Lengthy discussion, there was some frustration on some parts as well. Uh, but I think one thing that was agreed upon is that it needs to be updated because now we have a good problem. Um, I believe it's that something similar to what the residents stated earlier, is that we have a lot of people that are looking to be involved, and that is that is a good problem. And so uh I think some clarity in the policy would be helpful. So residents know uh the path and what they must do in order to be a part of um uh being a part of our boards and uh commissions. And um and then some something to tackle that issue of how we deal with when we have a large number of people applying. Uh, also, just for some greater in- input and and transparency and understanding of those that are that are applying, the council that ultimately makes um the decision to approve nominations um that have a a a greater scale and knowledge of of who is applying, what 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 we have as far as an overall um um what what is being put forward in the policy, who's being a part of those decisions, and 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 clarity on on what those steps are. I think that one thing uh that happened a couple of months ago was that there is a lack of of clarity. And like I said, I I've read the policy, I've read it a number of different times. Um, obviously, um, there was a disagreement on if the policy was followed or not. At the end of the day, that's that's no longer the point. The point is, obviously, something needs to be clarified and a more robust policy. The point is, obviously, something needs to be clarified and a more robust policy to capture the good problem we have, uh, needs to be addressed. So, uh, rather than myself going out and creating a policy and then bringing it forward to the council, I thought it'd be, um, better and wiser to have the, the council, uh, take part in that and own that as well. And I'd like to, uh, get the council's agreement to create a two-to-three-person, uh, task force in order to work on the policy, review it, revise it, and then make recommendations to the body.
There's the proposal. Thoughts, Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, uh, we've gone over this item on a couple of different meetings. I, I re-watched it again today. Uh, the way that we left it was you were gonna bring back an amendment to the policy or make suggestions on the policy, uh, Councilmember Ellison. I don't think that there is, um, widespread disagreement that the policy isn't working. It's been in place for multiple years. Uh, the P and Z, uh, seems to be functioning very well. I just watched their last meeting, um, and I think we've stumbled onto a, a pretty good group. Uh, it is a good problem that we have with multiple people, uh, applying for these boards and commissions. Um, I'm not in favor of creating a task force. Always would look forward to any changes that a council member would wanna bring forward, uh, but I don't think the policy is broken. Uh, I'm not confused by it. So, um, I would be in favor of, uh, sticking with the current policy that we have and not assigning a task force, uh, for this item.
Anyone else? Councilmember Flores-Kale.
Thank you. Um, in trying to analyze, overanalyze life like I always do, I created, um, I, first of all, I requested all the applications from staff, which I received, and then I kinda just went through them to figure out, is there an issue? If I just look at the numbers and I don't look at the names, and I try to figure out, okay, is there some kind of consistency here? And what I found was, if you go onto the shared drive and you put your mouse over a little clicker thing, it'll tell you how many people viewed and how many viewers you had. So, for example, you could have one viewer but ten views. So normally, just one person has looked at it ten times. Um, what I found was, there were several instances where a resume was viewed twice. There was an instant, since where a, a staff finalist candidate, um, they chose somebody where there was no resume submitted, as opposed to somebody submitting the application, a cover letter, and a resume. So I, is it a perfect system? No. But I think it's a little bit broken. Um, and then I, you know, I even like tried to figure out east, you know, who, how many on the east and how many on the west, and, and I'm, I'm just trying to get a good idea of representation for the, for P and Z. Because I think above and beyond everything else, we need input from everybody. And if we're getting twelve resumes, my opinion is, then we need, we need to go out a little bit and say, okay, so let's get one from each district, or let's get one from different locations, instead of three people that live two miles apart. And whether, whether that was intentional or not, that's the unintended consequence, is we have three people that we just added that live on one side of the road, on the highway, and they live less than two miles from each other.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess what we're trying to get at here, and, and I hear you, Councilman Ellison, is you're feeling that there's some inconsistencies with the way that these commissions or these people are being interviewed. Is there a cap, maybe, Mr. Sells can answer this, when it comes to these commissions, is there a cap on the applications that, um, has been looked at in the past? Because I hear also, there's not enough applicants, but then there's too many people we gotta interview. So, if the idea would be to make sure in all fairness that everybody gets an interview, if there was a cap on the applications that come through, you timestamp them on when they were received, and you would have a interview for each one. Now, on the charter, I guess it looked like it was stating that, you know, when you go to the second round interview, correct, it's city manager, mayor, and the elected official council member, correct? Whoever applies and has that interview, you find out what street they live on. You find out what district they live on. And it's that council member that does that interview. If that person's not available to do that interview, you can then go to your at-large. But in fairness, I think what Councilman Flores is trying to say is, is, uh, equal representation across the city. And if you're gonna look at updating these policies, we need to start there then, versus I want somebody that I know to put in for the application and do the interviews correctly.
Mayor, if I could just touch up on that. So the only issue I see with the, uh, cap is that maybe we're gonna miss out on someone that's qualified to, uh, you know, serve on this committee, and because they, uh, put in their application a little bit later than the first ones. And I worry about that, 'cause right now, we're, we, we have the greatest problem in the world, is that we now have a lot of people applying for these commission and boards. And if we're taking and looking at the applications and taking those that are most qualified, we now start at a, at a quicker pace. If you can get, if, if you're on a scale from, from zero to a hundred, and you can find someone that has maybe fifty to sixty percent of the experience needed to serve on these boards and commissions, why start at ground zero? And that's, that's the only thing I've been trying to figure out, is if we're going through these applicant, if the staff is going through these applications and picking those qualificat- those applicants through their qualifications, I think that's the right path to be going on. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes we, we've, we've seen this pattern where sometimes we have people all from one area volunteering for boards and commissions, 'cause they're very passionate about their city. And penalizing them for that, sometimes it's hard. I, I definitely think that we need representation throughout the city, but we need those in the other parts of the city to step up and, and apply. And I know we had a few, but when we go back to look at qualifications, I mean, we're looking at someone with experience versus somebody with no experience. And, you know, if there's nobody applying, then we have to do what we can to fill those positions, but we don't have that issue anymore as a city as we're growing. And I think if we're starting with people that have some qualifications, that can hit the ground running at a quicker pace, it might be the way to continue. Those are just my thoughts.
If we're not gonna have a cap, then, then why are we complaining that there's too many people to interview? Why are we in that, well, why are we in that phase?
So we, we're, what we're saying right now as a city, that we, we have staff look at the applications, and then they bring forward the ones with more qualifications to do that job. And if we get twelve applicants, and you have five that have exceptional resumes that have some experience in what they're gonna be assigned to, then you would naturally, you know, look at those five. In business, you would do the same thing. You know, I know they're not paid positions, but these are very important positions as well.
If, if I may?
I was gonna make some remarks I haven't spoken yet, but if you'd like to go ahead, that's fine. Councilperson Ellison, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I think this is proving the point where that, some of the problems here. So, one, bringing up the, the fact that staff looks at the resumes and determine who is qualified and who is not, that's not written in the policy. There's, that's not stated in the policy. So that, that is, that is part of what I'm saying, that there's a, a belief that that's what the policy says, but that's not what the policy says, that staff reviews the application and determines who's qualified outside of what is in the city charter. Number three says, city staff will evaluate applications from those citizens who meet the charter's basic criteria for membership and a first-round evaluation. That's the only criteria, and that's what we've listed about not owing the city, been a resident for six months, all those things that we talked about. Uh, so that's one of those things that clearly there's, there's a misunderstanding there, and I think we need to clarify that there. Maybe because of the way it reads, that's not clear. So maybe that's one thing that can be cleaned up. Second point, qualifications. That's subjective right now. What are the qualifications for P and Z? For one person, it might be one thing, for another person, it might be another thing. Uh, it might be institutional knowledge, it might have me have a certain degree, it might be having had a certain profession, it might be have, I, I don't, I don't know what it is, but there are no set qualifications in the policy. So right now, it's all subjective. There will be some subjectivity in this process. That will be in the interview phase, when those four people, uh, either the ones designated or they're, uh, they're designee, that's when the subjectivity comes in. But the subjectivity should not be in reviewing those applications to determine who is more qualified than, than another based on their resume or work, uh, work history or different things like that. So because, a- as I stated a couple of months back, even then, we've had, we have some current, uh, P and Z commissioners that are, are outstanding P and Z commissioners. We've had, uh, past, uh, P and Z commissioners that are outstanding P and Z commissioners. But I guarantee, if you look at some of their resumes and their background experience, it wouldn't necessarily be tied to whatever it is that each of us have in our mind are the qualifications for P and Z. And so I think that is one of those things that needs to be codified. If, if we are gonna have qualifications, what are those qualifications? If they're beyond what the policy currently states that is outlined in the city charter? The, those are two examples, right now, just from this discussion, that, that are not clear, and that's where we're having, there, there's some confusion. And therefore, if we're having that confusion, citizens that are applying to be a part of a volunteer board also might have that confusion.
Um, I have, I have several thoughts. Uh, one is that the, the P and Z, since we're, we talk about P and Z the most, but that's one board and commission, this is a policy that applies to all boards and commissions. So that's number one. So if you try to get too technical with one, you'll need to break it out, maybe have separate rules for P and Z, uh, than for else, 'cause that's the one that everybody's most interested in, those nominees. Uh, I've never had a single negative word about any nominees for any other political boards. They've all passed unanimously in the five years that I've been here, uh, without, uh, without any fanfare. Uh, more than half of P and Z nominees have had this discussion for five years. East and west, I mean, it, does the fact that the three commissioners that resigned lived on the west side matter?
Yeah.
Did, that, does, does that matter?
It should.
Is that the criteria? If three, if a commissioner who's on the west side quits, uh, we have to replace them with someone else who's on the west side, we can district it out? I mean, that's the direction we go. Do we, we've had this discussion, do we start, do we get, um, gender, ethnicity, and other end, you know, group identities, uh, as qualifications that we take into consideration? Some, uh, that's something that's been brought forward. Um, you know, at the end of the day, every board and commission is a little bit different. There are different drives and motives, uh, behind what I think the council should look for, but at the end of the day, we all are sub, you know, we have to approve it somehow. I do not believe that what we are doing right now is trying to make the process, um... It's, it's not clear to me that, that the motivation behind this is, is, eh, to, well, I, I'm not sure what the motivation behind it is. So I, I won't say what, what it could be, but, um, a- at the end of the day, all, all I can say is, we, we have a policy in place, we try to get as many applications together as we can. We, if there's a situation where there are a bunch for P and Z, we narrow it down, and that's based on just logic. But if everyone here wants to require an interview of all applicants to get an interview, that's a text amendment change. That's all you gotta do is to propose that, if you apply. But if you're wanting to go into some kind of great detail, I think it's gonna cause more problems, uh, than it's gonna bring solutions. Uh, I, I think maybe it's just that the nominees weren't the nominees that were preferred by some members. And I, I, that's been that way every single time. I've seen east-side residents get voted down on political basis, I've seen west-side, uh, folks get voted down on, on the basis of politics. Uh, the nominees, all three that came recently, were not known to anyone on the panel. Uh, well, uh, one of them was, but not by me. Uh, and, uh, and so those nominees came forward based on their qualifications purely. It was a, it was a very unbiased process that brought those nominees forward. Uh, the subjectivity that was in play was really the subjectivity of the interview group to try to figure out who would be best for the specific role of being a P and Z commissioner. Um, and that's not always easy. So, uh, I, I don't know. I, 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 there, there is a time when a council member on this board made a recommendation to draw straws. That was an absolute dead-serious recommendation, and that is kind of the ultimate transparency, let everybody have a shake. It doesn't matter whether you're qualified or what, whether the interview board, and the interview board is kind of the thing that I think makes this policy work really well, because it's the chair of this board, the chair of whichever board is, is being sought. So if it's Parks Board, it's the Parks Chair, if it's the, uh, Library Board, it's the Library Chair, and then it's the department head that oversees the board, plus the city manager. And there can be designees assigned, which we use that, uh, um, and, and there's a four-person panel. There's a lot of discussion about whether this person's really interested in parks, or maybe they're a better fit for economic development, vice versa. There's a lot of discussion about trying to get people plugged in as best as we can. Try to have conversations with people who aren't selected about reapplying. I've had so many of those conversations. Uh, I've had conversations with folks about applying for different boards, which I know we've all done that as, uh, well, but I, I'm always gonna be on the side of leaning towards qualifications o- over, um, political geographic areas in which a, a person lives, while understanding that you wanna do the best you can to have a, have a mixed, uh, board as, as much as is, is feasible. But it's hard for me to, to try to pick somebody just because of where they live or any other factor like that. That's, that's not the qualifications that I go for, so. Councilman Flores-Kale.
Thank you. To be fair and to be clear, what I'm looking for is fair and transparent. I'm not trying to like, get all my friends on there, I'm not trying to east-west it out, but what I will tell you is that under applications, less than four, there's four of them, applications that were seen by less than four people. And if I'm correct, there's four, four people on the board, for you guys to look at the resumes and the applications for the resume, there are three different resumes.
You feel real confident in what you're saying right now?
I, I can pull it up.
That less than four people looked at their resumes?
Yes, it says on their viewers, which is different than views.
Okay.
And one of them, everybody's talking about qualifications, one of them didn't even have a resume. So how do you under, how do you say that, oh, it's qualifications, when they don't even turn in their resume? And if someone can explain to me, or give me a short detail what qualifications are, because I think if we ask everybody on this dais, it'll probably be different. So the real issue is, what define, what defines qualifications? Because under the charter, there are two qualifications. That's residency and not having a bill with the city that's passed due. Those are the two qualifications that should get you an interview. Am I correct? Is there another qualifications underneath there that I, I can't find or that's defined in a way that I don't know?
Those are the qualifications that allow for you to apply successfully.
So what are the qualifications that say I, I'm entitled to a, an interview?
The board, the, the, the committee reviews the applications.
Do they have a list of qualifications, or is that individual?
The board reviews them and works out a group to interview if that is needed. Otherwise, we interview everyone. The same process we, we go by to, to narrow down from the large group to a middle group in this situation, is the process we use to narrow down from a middle group to one. We just use, uh, written communication as an application first, and then audible communication through an interview second. But it's still subjective based on the totality, 'cause I can tell you things that I was considering that aren't, they're not, it's just, there's a lot to it. What if this person serves on a bunch of boards, and we're thinking, maybe this person might be stretched too thin? You know, those kind of...
I get that. I get it. But all I'm saying is...
You have to, you have to, that's what you have to do when you're interviewing, is you have to make those kinds of decisions.
If they get that far. But my whole point is, they can't even get that far, because they're not getting their resumes looked at. Some of them don't even have a resume. There's other underlying issues. And I get, we can't hire everybody... And I get, we can't hire everybody. And I get that there's a limit, but what I'm saying is, let's make this fair. Can we have a process that maybe doesn't even have qualifications? You can still be subjective. But some kind of like ten, ten applications, you stamp it when you get it. And then, and it goes from there. It doesn't have to be like super technical, but it could be fair and the same across the board where everybody looks at the resumes, everybody looks at the applications, and if there's cover letters, then everybody looks at that. That is a bare minimum that we should be doing.
Any other discussion? Somebody who hasn't spoken yet? Councilmember Bradshaw.
So in listening to everyone speak, and I apologize, Mayor Protem, I did not get to hear the first half of what you were saying. Um, I've been able to get a few different perspectives. And for one, I would like to say, I think that we're using the words qualific, we should be using the words requirements rather than qualifications. And for two, I really liked what Councilmember Brizow was saying, and I really agree with him. Because the application process regardless across the board should always be subjective because we're never going to get the same quality or the same, uh, I guess, the same applicants each and every single time. What we may want to set as a, by trying to narrow it down too much with like a task force, you're really going to reduce the pool for one of applicants and your opportunities to bring in the best candidates. So if you are starting to say, I think about it like this. Your, your application process for schools, for jobs, for whatever is pretty much, this is, this is common knowledge. You go through and you pick the best candidate. And you can't define what quote unquote "the best" is, but you have these resumes, these applications laid out before you. You go through each one and you see which one is most qualified. You judge, you know, the character of the people in the interviews. It's, it's a combination of things. And I think trying to manipulate and control it too much with a task force is just going to be a disservice to the boards in the future.
I don't think that's what this is asking. It's not asking for a board for that. It's just asking for a task force to define. So it's not going to be a consistent task force. Am I correct?
The problem is the task force.
Yes, so I just want to, if I may clarify. So yeah, the, the, the task force would be to review, revise and make recommendations to bring back to the council on, on an updated policy, not to be the task force that is going to go forward, uh, reviewing the commissions and boards and different things like that. So this is just a, uh, just like we do in many other different things where some attention and research and uh, thoughtfulness needs to be put into an item, uh, which is requesting of two or three. And actually, I'm, I'm asking that I not be a part of that task force. Uh, eh, eh, include, and I ask that the mayor not be a part of that task force. So the other five of you, uh, step, two to three of you step up to review the policy and, and make, uh, make, uh, recommendations, uh, compile recommendations to make to the council. Uh, so like I said, I want to take myself out of it as well to the point until it gets to the council for us to review and talk about. So that's what I'm, that's the purpose of the task force. Uh, but one, one thing I wanted to mention, or a couple of things actually. So I think, once again, the, the more we talk about this, this just further proves my point of, or, or what I think in my mind is the point of, of the qualifications, what those are. I, I think Councilmember Bradshaw, you make a good point. Maybe qualifications isn't the word. Maybe it's requirements. Well, what, either way, what are those? What are those requirements so that everybody, council, staff, citizens, all know what those requirements are? And they're, they're outlined and they're clear. Because otherwise, then it's just the subjectivity of what somebody might think is qualified or might feel is recommend, uh, what recommendations are. I'm not sure if y'all had reviewed the other applications that applied. We could all have a, a thought of what, that looking at those requirements or qualifications, maybe being a former PNC commissioner is a requirement or qualification, whichever term we're going to use. But, you know, not, not getting selected. And by, I want to make it clear, I'm not advocating for everyone that applies to get an interview. That, that is not what I'm advocating. I'm just advocating that if we're going to have, uh, the subjectivity, that's in the interview. When people have gotten into the interview and in that, that group of four, uh, make a subjective decision based on those audible interviews that the mayor mentioned. The, where the, there should be less subjectivity and more objectivity where everybody knows where the standard bearer is, is in the process leading up to that. That, that, that's what I'm talking about. And then Mayor, uh, you mentioned about you don't know where this is coming from or what the, the spirit behind this is. I'm just trying to, to update a policy that I felt like, because now we have an issue and brought it up with PNC because this is the, the board in which obviously we've had the most applicants we've ever had for any board or commission. So that's one reason why PNC gets, keep getting brought up. But I think regardless, just like this po- policy, it can cover all boards and commissions equally. And it, it, it would be the same rules and the same, same understanding of what those qualifications recommendations are going up to that point. It, once again, the subjectivity comes when it, within the interview. But if, if, if there are qualifications that we keep talking about or requirements that I don't see outlined in the policy, that's just my only point here. Is that I don't see what these qualifications or rec, uh, requirements or what have you are outlined in the policy for people to know if they meet that or not. And then maybe they will understand and, and ma- maybe apply still, maybe not apply. I'm not sure. But that would, it would, it would give clear communication to the community as well as those that are ultimately voting on the nominee of that, okay, these things are all, are all met. And these are all things that no matter who applied, they, they had an, an equal shake on that. And I'm not advocating for anybody to have been nominated or over another person. At the end of the day, the, the folks that were nominated could have still end up, uh, being the ones. That's, that's not what I'm advocating for at all. My point is just to clarify this policy, update it, and take in consideration the things that we will be seeing in the future in more interest from our citizenry to be involved in, in, in volunteering their time to be a part of these boards and commissions. And once again, that's just a great problem. I'm not, I'm not, once again, I, I, I've, I've listened to this. I've taught, challenged within myself. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot or trying to demean anybody. I just think the policy needs to be reviewed, revised and updated for where we are now in our city's time as a larger city, and we have a larger group of people who, uh, want to be a part of this. That, that, that is where this is coming from. And so clearly with this discussion, once again, qualifications kept getting brought up. And I'm like, where, where are those qualifications? I don't, I don't understand what those are. So that once again, that shows that there's subjectivity that each one who passes on that, whether it's each one of those four that are on there, each one of us, seven, staff, the citizens, community, they may all have an idea of what, what is qualifying or what is a requirement to be on this board. If we outline it and, and, and put that there of what those qualifications are, then it takes out that subjectivity and people don't feel like they're being left out for one reason or another and putting us in a position where it look, makes us look like we are favor, there is favoritism or, or certain people are getting appointed or something's political or different things like that. It, it takes all that out. The more objective you can be and the more outlined you can have that in the policy.
Councilman Bradshaw.
Uh, so you mentioned two or three council members on this said task force with you excluding yourself. And I'm just curious if you have, um, spoken to any of the other council members or have any idea of who would be interested in being on this task force?
I have not. I have not spoken to anybody about their interest for it. Uh, just once again, you know, I was reviewing how I approached it the first time. I'm trying to get better. Uh, as I'm trying to talk about these things in a way that I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to come at anybody. This is not coming from an ill place. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, I want you to understand that. This is just, I'm trying to do my best to create a, an objective policy that everybody can see and understand clearly what it says. Because once again, from even our discussion on this, there, there are things that are being brought up. And I'm like, okay, but where is that in the policy? So I'm just trying to get that objective. And I felt obviously from the last discussion, that it just might be best that I'm not a part of that task force. Uh, Mr. Mitchell's not a part of that task force. And then maybe some other members can, can weigh in and, and try to achieve. And obviously, that task force is going to just be baking something to, to bring for the entire body to review and, you know, perhaps even make better, uh, with even more minds being on it. So that, 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 that was the goal. And, but to answer your question, no, ma'am. Uh, I have not discussed with anybody about their interest on being in this. I was just hoping that the council, we'd have some council members step up, uh, two, preferably even three, uh, and want to, to address this.
Can I say, um, I'm not trying to be confrontational either. I get a little heated and I, I'm with Dex. I think we're both get, get all riled up. But the ultimate issue I think is unintended consequences. So when you don't try to be proactive about making sure that it's, it's, there, we're doing it the right way, that you do get unintended consequences. And it's not anybody trying to be mean or to, to do anything i- in a negative way. But it, the way it turns out is ultimately what's important. And if the way it's turning out is not everybody is reading, you know, the resumes or not everybody is, um, as, so defined in what they should be looking for, then I think that it's okay to go in there and say, okay, we'll, we'll have a little committee get together and just maybe make some recommendations for us. This isn't what's going to be in stone. This is just something to help our committees to, to be the best committees they can be.
Well, we have seven members here. We have seven very different perspectives on all this. So I, I don't know how we're going to achieve that. I'm certainly not taking my name out of the running for a task force. And I don't see any reason why I should be volunteered to do that. Um, but, um, I'm, you know. So.
Mayor, Councilmember Rizzo, we've spent a lot of time on this issue, several meetings. Uh, one meeting went into midnight, a little past midnight. I think somebody needs to make a motion, uh, and we could vote on, and I'd call for roll vote, roll call vote if they decide to bring that motion forward.
I think, well, certainly I didn't mean any offense to you, sir. I just was stating because uh, what happened last time, then maybe the other council's members might want to take that, uh, to champion taking the task force, certainly eh, eh, uh, I'll, I'll just take myself out of it. So I'll just do that uh, as far as the task force goes. But it will obviously come still to the body and the council to review whatever the task force and adopt whatever the task force brings forward, make edits, changes even to that. Uh, so I, I've just was asking for the council to, to own that and, and try and do what they can to improve the policy. And I think you said it, we have nearly seven different views on this. So clearly, eh, eh, as the policy is right now, and once again, we're talking about qualifications. Obviously, PNC is important to you. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, you, you, that is the one that you have stayed with. I know you said you pointed Councilmember Rizzo to the Parks Board, uh, another very, very important board as well. Um, and so, um, I, I guess, as far as, I, I was looking for volunteers, uh, in order to make a motion, those that would want to volunteer to be a part of the task force and take that on. And then that, that would be the motion that the council would authorize those, those people on the task force to review, revise and make edits to bring forward to the council as a recommendation.
I'd love to be on that task force with Mr. Mitchell.
Mayor Protem.
Um, it says review, revise and update. I feel like we've reviewed this policy ad nauseam. It has yet to be revised because no revisions or amendments have been brought forward in all of this discussion. Thus, it's not updated. Uh, we all have admitted that there's seven different opinions on how this goes. I don't see how bringing a task force together with two or three members is somehow going to, uh, bring together unison on this. I feel like we are opening up a can of worms. These several meetings are proving that on this item. Um, I do not want to be on this task force. Uh, I don't even want to see a task force created for this item uh, because it's going to lead to more of these conversations about trying to fix a policy that seems to be very much working. Might not be perfect, but it's working very well. It's been working very well for multiple years. Um, we have good members on there. And when it starts getting broken is when members of this board start fooling with the other boards. And so I am just a little bit tired of this discussion. Um, I would like for us to move on, uh, sooner than later from this item. Uh, but, uh, I do not want to be on this task force. Or I don't want to see a task force created for this item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 30, request council to assign a task force to review, revise and update boards slash commissions policy.
All right, there's, there's been a motion by Councilmember Floris Cale in a second to approve Agenda Item Number 30. There's no, um, there's no direction there. So we don't have that, we don't have a task force actually set up there, but.
This is assign a task force.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll take a vote. If the vote is passes, then we'll, the vote will be, mean that we'll assign the task force, in which case we'll go from there with figuring out who would be on it. If the vote fails, we'll consider the item tabled. Does that sound fair?
Fair.
All right, roll call vote.
Coach.
Nay.
Rizzo.
Nay.
Tobias.
Nay.
Ellison.
Aye.
Bradshaw.
Nay.
Mitchell.
Nay.
Floris Cale.
Aye.
All right, motion fails five to two. Next up, Agenda Item Number 31, request council to schedule joint meetings to discuss vision and goals for the year with the PNC Commission, uh, Parks Board. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. Uh, so this item is to ask of the council to do a joint meeting with, uh, at least te- these two boards and commissions. Um, I wanted to start there. Uh, I have served on planning and zoning in the past. One of the best meetings I had was when we had a joint meeting with the council to get direction, better understanding what the visions and goals were for the year. Um, and directives as the, the planning and zoning is an appoint, appointed body that makes recommendations to the council. I think it would be beneficial to have some communication with them to try to, uh, give direction and an idea of what we're trying to accomplish in the year and to help them feel more included in the process and better understanding of why some of the things that happen or don't happen or what have you could occur. Uh, I think, uh, there's nothing that positive that could come from this uh, as far as, uh, meeting with, with these two boards and commissions. We obviously have a lot of projects in the works that deal with public spaces, open spaces and parks. They deal with just overall planning, uh, what we're doing with the, uh, with zoning throughout the city and things like, things of that nature. Uh, so, uh, my idea was that we could meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission on the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is when they do their workshop, so their second meeting. Um, that we, that we could have, uh, a meeting with them. And ideally, my vision with this was be, you know, we have our visioning workshop, uh, at the beginning of each year. The council, uh, puts forward a vision and ideas that they want to accomplish for the year. And then obviously that gets disseminated to, to Scott and he disseminates that to staff. Um, and then where we come in is with, with the boards and commissions that we appoint, uh, something similar as well. Where we kind of help share that vision, what our goals are for the year, what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that would help really, um, build a strong relationship between the council and these boards and commissions respectfully and, and really, uh, clear up any ambiguity. It's one, one voice and one vision. It's all being talked about in, in that meeting and discussed. Questions can be asked, uh, of the council. Questions can be asked, uh, of the council and of staff by Planning and Zoning and the Parks Board. And, um, yeah, that, that's more or less it.
Thank you, Councilor Ellison. Uh, any discussion on that? Councilor Bradshaw.
I've got a question for Councilor. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ash.
Sorry. Um, so I think that it's a really good idea to collaborate. I think that's, that's actually, um, really smart and can hopefully in the future help prevent, you know, the miscommunication and things like that. And I liked what you said about the one vision. There are some caveats that come with that though. There's, there's a few things, because I know we have a few new P and Z commissioners. I, I think maybe letting them get their feet wet first um, and just kind of get acclimated with, you know, their fellow commissioners and just with what they have going on, on their plate right now before necessarily, um, starting that collaboration. And then also too, because we are in the middle of budget season where we have our budget workshops, um, I, I'm not sure about any other councilmembers, but the time restrictions, I guess that, that would be an issue for me for, for the next few months. So I, I think having this conversation, you know, a few weeks or a few months down the road, at least for me personally, would, time wise, would work out better.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I've got a, just a couple of questions, one for Councilmember Ellison, one for Scott. So you're proposing maybe meeting once a year, Councilmember Ellison, with P and Z and the Parks Board just to, to work together towards, for everyone to be on the same page for the vision, correct?
Yes, sir. So I, 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 so at, at, yeah, at, at the least, at the beginning, I think at least once a year would be ideal to, to have that discussion. And I want to say real quickly, I think getting, uh, that conversation with Planning and Zoning commissioners, once they're new, is the best time to do that. But so they, once again, they, they're appointed, uh, commissioned by the council and they make recommendations to the council. So there would be no greater way to get acclimated and learn than to have that, uh, first initial meeting there as well. And, and I am proposing it to be on, like I said, that Tuesday. We typically meet on Tuesdays, they typically meet on Tuesdays. Uh, you know, it doesn't have to be long and drawn out, but I think it, it would go a long way to, in showing good faith and good favor uh, in trying to be as communicative, uh, communicative and, 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 uh, once we can create that, uh, share that one voice, uh, and vision from the council on what we are trying to accomplish. And certainly, we are in the middle of budget season, but we won't see our next budget workshop until the end of June when, uh, Mr. Sellers from, uh, our, our meeting last Saturday, uh, we had our initial discussions. So I, I think, in my, in my opinion, uh, I think this would be a good time going forward with that, uh, doing that in, in the near future.
My second question is to Scott. Scott, is this something that council used to do in the past? I, I think I recollect hearing something like that.
It's probably, probably more for me because I'm the one that pushed for those quarterly me- I, I tried to do them quarterly when I was first elected mayor. So, uh, in 2017, we set that up. That's where a lot of the collaboration with the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, some of those workshops, uh, there was a desire to meet with all the boards. We were trying to schedule them all quarterly and it just became real challenging, real fast to get everybody together. Fifteen, twenty person meeting, you know, that, that was the challenge. But I agree that they are valuable. Uh, it, they just, it has to be sparingly, so. Uh, we, tho- those, tho- those meetings fell off and that's on me if they did because I, I stopped pushing for them, um, uh, back then. So I'm open, I'm certainly open. Councilor Tobias.
I thought we were some, hearing something about this when I first said council about having meetings. And I'd be open to a yearly, but quarterly would be hard.
Right.
Because that's a lot of meetings you're throwing on everybody, not just.
Well, the quarterly meeting was, it was, it was quarterly with P and Z, like one quarter. First quarter would be P and Z, second quarter would be planning, th- or, um, um, you know, all the boards, once a quarter. We try, we were trying to do that and we couldn't even get that done, so.
Yeah.
I do like this proposal though, because it's just two particular boards and they're the two that I think we would want to meet with probably, so.
I, I think those are the two most important boards. One reason is because, uh, the P and Z, if we're all on the same page moving forward to the city, I think it's beneficial. Uh, with parks, I think that we could collaborate well together once a year to see what the needs of the public are. We would have never seen a pandemic coming and our parks being so important, our trails as well. But now having that knowledge, being able to share that with the, uh, Parks Board would be beneficial, I think, for the residents, uh, for everyone who lives in Kyle. So I definitely would love to see those two, uh, meetings come together to fruition. Uh, keeping in mind everybody's, you know, uh, time restraints. Uh, I know we've got a lot of commitments as well, but if we could come together on a time, I think this, this would be very beneficial for the entire city.
Councilor Tobias.
Real quick, um, maybe what you're, uh, requesting, Mr. Ellison, uh, we could maybe look at doing a yearly workshop with these two on a, somewhere here at the hall, just for them to come together. Maybe also include the economic development team.
All right, that's, that would, that would be another good.
To just come together once a year and hear, hear everybody's visions and goals and see where we're at. And, and that way we can also collaborate, meet each other, visit with each other on that end and, uh, see where everybody's perspective is. Uh, maybe not be quarterly or maybe twice a year or maybe the first part of the year, just like we do our, uh, budget workshop. Something of that to kind of see where we at, what were our goals last year? What are our goals going forward to this new year and so forth on that end? And energize all the boards to get on board on the same page for Team Kyle. Just to suggest.
My, my thought actually is the, of the boards that were, uh, um, proposed, the Parks Board would be one I would like to do first. Uh, for the reasons Councilmember Bradshaw stated, just letting P and Z get acclimated. But also Parks Board makes a lot of decisions. They, they have, you know, they're empowered by the city council to make decisions on, uh, parks dedication fees, whether, you know, and how some of that looks. They get to view the parks designs as subdivisions at a more detailed level. So they, they would have some insight and I wouldn't be, and I would also like to know what their thoughts are on the props and how involved they would want to be in our parks props. Um, that'd be the one I would try to see if we could get scheduled first. But I, I also agree with Councilmember Bradshaw that the weekends, in particular Saturday workshops, the summers are just so hard uh, to try to put those extra days together when we're going through all of our budgeting and other, everybody's got vacations and trips and things. Um, economic development meets, uh, once a month, uh, in, like on a Thursday lunch at Seton. Uh, that would be a good time to do a workshop. It would be actually at their meeting, I think, where we just, because it's condensed. You just show up, there's, uh, lunch provided and we could workshop that. Uh, I've been to probably three of those meetings, three or four maybe. And they're always, uh, they're always interesting because it's a, it's a different kind of discussion they have, which is kind of cool. So I, I'm, I'm open to all of it, it's just a matter of scheduling.
If we're already hitting mid-year, so you're right, Ms. Bradshaw, we are getting into budget season holiday, I mean, vacations are coming up. So maybe it could be something to look forward to, maybe the end of the year or maybe the first part of the year of next year to really, um, get on board with all the departments. If that's just, uh, direction you're trying to go with, Councilman Nelson.
Maybe we could have Mariana meet with the Parks Board first and try to schedule a fourth quarter meeting with the Parks Board. I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out, I don't know. Well, just fourth quarter, yeah, anytime, anytime before the end of the year or, I mean, we could go as far as next year, but there's elections and it's just not likely that that meeting will actually take place. I was thinking like September, October, November, some, somewhere in that range.
I was thinking early September, so we get done with the budget and now we've got a little more free time. Uh, kids are finally back in school. Uh, so I know the summers are, are kind of tough because we like to spend a lot of time with our children and, and with the family. Uh, but I'd love to see something before the end of the year. And I'd love to see something start up as early as September, maybe even late, yeah, sometime in August. Uh, I know June's really tough for me, uh, and here in May, we're pretty booked, but.
Well, this is gonna.
Come to fruition.
This is gonna require like a doodle poll from everybody to try to figure, when does the Parks Board meet? What's their schedule? Does anybody know?
It was just Monday of last week.
Well, I mean, what's their routine? Fourth Monday?
The last Monday of the month.
The last Monday of the month.
The last Monday of the month at 7:00 PM.
So maybe, maybe we could try to meet with them on that night, on their meeting so that we're not, you know, um, in either the last Monday of August or the last Monday of September. I'm for September.
I have a busy August as well, but.
And the, and again, the, the budget is in August still, so. What, what do you, what do y'all think about that? Mariana, do you know of anything, the last meeting in Sep-, uh, the last Monday in September that would prevent us from having a joint meeting?
Ma- Mayor, if I can throw something out while, while Mariana's about to answer. So what we have historically done is in November, after the election, once the new council is sitting, they appoint the new members. So the memberships on these boards and commissions typically roll November to November. So if we did any sort of joint meeting in September, we're maybe missing two or three board members. That'll look late November.
You mean two or three board members that might be about to have their terms expire?
Correct.
Is anybody terming out?
Uh, each year it depends. Some do, you know, some get reappointed.
All right, well, that, that goes back to Councilmember Tobias's point about beginning of the year, the very start of the, of the new year. Might be the best timing. Well, then the question is, are we trying to, trying to schedule a meeting? Or are we trying to schedule a series, uh, like a, a plan essentially that we, that we stick with? If it's a plan, then certainly that's fine. I don't, I don't care, however, however you want to do it.
Maybe a day long, something here. Maybe we can rent a facility here in town, keep everybody local. And then, uh, we can just all meet again with all the departments. Each one would have a time slot to give their presentation. And council can give a presentation as well as what our goals for the next year are. E- even if it means that if we do another retreat next year around the same time, we could say this is what our goal, so everybody can be on the same page moving forward.
Maybe we add that to just the overall annual budget process, start in January with that day long meeting and then February, March have the vision workshop and go into the budget meetings.
Do you think you'd put that into a kind of a, some kind of emails, kind of scheduled out, where, where, like a plan essentially? That, so that we could try to figure out the different elements there?
Sure.
Any objections to that, letting Scott kind of handle putting together an email on that? I don't think we're gonna be able to decide dates right now, but. Okay, anything else on that item?
Scott, if you could get with Councilmember Ellison too and, and look at those dates and then shoot them out to us would be great. Uh, and hopefully we can come together and, and get these dates going. I think this is a great, uh, proposal brought forward by Councilmember Ellison. I look forward to, uh, uh, sharing these, uh, the count, getting the council and these commissions together. I think it's much needed and I think it's only gonna benefit everyone in the long run, the citizens of Kyle. Thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Ellison.
All right. Nothing else, we'll, we'll move on. Uh, does that conclude the business? Move back to executive session?
Sure.
All right, next up, executive session. Councilmember Flores Cale.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The Texas, the city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all the following topics. Penning to com- contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, sales tax matter, possible purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072, acquisition of property for park purpose, Pos- Project Pacific Blue, Project Eb- Eberding, Project Gold, Project S U F C.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you.
Adjourned. May the force be with you.
May the force be with you.